Alright, council will come back. So, we have worn, barely have worn, so have to get this, the rest of our items done. And I think, so on the, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven items on two thirds. I know that HHS will be up first, and then we'll do finance, so get ready to finance. And then the last one will be EB and D, so. Okay, so yeah, so Chairman Jumping Eagle, if you want to do your items, then we'll do Chairman Carlo, if you have one item. And then Vice Chair Yellowboy, or Chairman Linn, White Horse, if you want to do finance, you know you got two items. Then EB and D will be the last one, so go ahead, go ahead, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. First on is resolution of the Ogallisou tribal council, Ogallisou tribe, accepting the transfer agreement for project AB dash one six, dash B fifty-four Wounded Knee Lagoon renovation on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas Ogallisou tribe is organized in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Organization Act of nineteen thirty-four, on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five, twenty-five USC fifty-one twenty-three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws. And under article three of Ogallisou tribe's constitution, the tribal council is the governing body of the Ogallisou tribe. And whereas the tribal constitution authorized with the tribal council in article four, section one A, to negotiate with the federal government on behalf of the tribe. In section one F, to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. In section one G, to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe and any available tribal council funds. And in section one W, to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Ogallisou tribe and its membership. And whereas, under the terms of a memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the tribe and the Indian House Service, this individual's services project is complete. And whereas, on the thirteenth day of April twenty twenty-one, the Health and Human Services Committee of the tribal council met and voted to forward the final approval of the transfer agreement for project AB dash one six dash fifty-four Wounded Knee Lagoon renovation on to the full tribal council. And whereas, the tribal council has considered the matter and determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe and its members to approve the transfer agreement for project AB dash one six dash D fifty-four Wounded Knee Lagoon renovation. Now therefore be it resolved that the tribal council of the Ogallisou tribe does hereby approve the transfer agreement for project AB dash one six dash B fifty-four Wounded Knee Lagoon renovation. And be it further resolved that the Ogallisou tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute this contract. Motion.
Motion seconded by Councilman Mark Jr., any question?
But the idea of grappling with a holdout, the idea of somebody trying to understand who wants it.
Do you know mine? Secretary, follow the vote on this, thank you. In the motion, in the second by Councilman Mark Jr., thank you.
Wesley Hopkins Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Kara Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer?
Yes.
Austin.
You support and appropriate medical terminology that we've been hearing before, that we saw a lot of things.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlo Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Craig Dillon?
Counsel, a motion passed, a seventeen yes, two not voting, thank you, council, Chairman.
Resolution of the Ogallisou tribal council of Ogallisou tribe, accepting the transfer agreement for project AB dash one seven dash J ten Wombly Sewer Lift Station renovation on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas Ogallisou tribe is organized in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Organization Act of nineteen thirty-four, on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five, twenty-five USC fifty-one twenty-three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws. And under article three of Ogallisou tribe's constitution, the tribal council is the governing body of Ogallisou tribe. And whereas, the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council in article four, section one A, to negotiate with the federal government on behalf of the tribe, in section one F, to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. In section one G, to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe, any available tribal council funds. And in section one W, to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Ogallisou tribe and its membership. And whereas, under the terms of a memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the tribe and the Indian House Service, this individual services project is complete. And whereas, on the thirteenth day of April twenty twenty-one, the Health and Human Services Committee of the tribal council met and voted to forward the final approval of the transfer agreement for project AB dash one seven dash J ten Wombly Sewer Lift Station renovation on to the full tribal council. And whereas, the tribal council has considered the matter and determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe and its members to approve the transfer agreement for project AB dash one seven dash J ten Wombly Sewer Lift Station renovation. Now therefore be, therefore be it resolved that the tribal council of Ogallisou tribe does hereby approve the transfer agreement for project AB dash one seven dash J ten Wombly Sewer Lift Station renovation. And be it further resolved that the Ogallisou tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute this contract. Motion.
Motion made, seconded by Councilman Watkins and Councilman Little Thunder. Any questions, council, a minor person? Hearing or seeing none, secretary, if you could run the vote, please, thank you.
Wesley Hopkins Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Kara Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel, that passes the unanimous nineteen four zero against, thank you, council, Chairman.
Resolution of the Ogallisou tribal council of Ogallisou tribe approving the SDS priority listing for twenty twenty-two. Number one, PR dash CW Pine Ridge four zero seven South Water Storage Tank. Number two, PR dash CSL Manderson Lagoon Rehabilitation. Number three, PR dash SW Reservation Wide Dump Closures. Number four, PR dash CW North Martin Water Source Improvements. Whereas Ogallisou tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Organization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection four seven six. And under article three of the constitution, the Ogallisou tribal council is the governing body of Ogallisou tribe. And whereas, the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council in article four, section one W, to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the tribe and its members. And whereas, article four, section one T of the Ogallisou tribal constitution authorizes the Ogallisou tribal council to delegate to subordinate boards or officers any of the enumerated powers in article four, section one, reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas, the Health and Human Services Committee, HHS Committee, is a standing committee of the tribal council that oversees the Indian House Service, IHS Martin Sanitation Facilities Construction Projects. And whereas, the Health and Human Services Committee has considered the matter on April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and did approve this resolution for presentation to the tribal council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisou tribal council of the Ogallisou tribe has voted to approve the following SDS project listing as prioritized. Number one, PR dash CW Pine Ridge four zero seven South Water Storage Tank. Number two, PR dash CSL Manderson Lagoon Rehabilitation. Number three, PR dash SW Reservation Wide Dump Closures. Number four, PR dash CW North Martin Water Source Improvements. Be it further resolved that the Ogallisou tribal council of the Ogallisou tribe authorizes the president or vice president of the tribe to sign any documents necessary to execute this resolution.
Motion. Thank you, Chairman, is your second? Second by Councilman Youngman. Any discussion on this item, council, Councilman Poyer?
What dumpster can be closed, Oliver? Is James on?
I, I am, could I hear the question again, I'm sorry.
What dumpster can be closed?
This would be a cleanup project to clean up illegal dump sites throughout the reservation. There's about a hundred and twenty-five of them roughly. And we would be hiring a contractor to go through and clean all of those up.
I think it should state some illegal dump sites, because the way this reads it, that's our present dumps.
That's the way the project was put forward to us. I, I certainly have no argument with the title, but that's, that's the intent of the project is to clean up the illegal dump sites throughout the reservation.
Can we amend that somewhere and put illegal dump sites, dumps in general, I mean, I mean, this closes all of our dumps.
We can do that, and I'll, I'll investigate changing the title, absolutely. But we still recommend proceeding with this project as, as its priority three. With the additional points, we believe it should push this project into the funding range and should be able to get it done next year. It's not a guarantee, it's just, but without those additional points, we fear it probably won't get funded. So, I'm certainly more than willing to adjust the title, but I still recommend the project.
So Chairman, I meant my motion to approve with that change, to change that language to illegal reservation wide dump closures, or however, is to include that language in there. And then on that last sentence, there's a typo in there, necessary to execute the this resolution. Maybe have him take out the. So I'll motion to approve this with, with the amendments.
Thank you, motion has amended. Any further discussion on this? Thank you, Councilman Poyer, for bringing that up. Any discussion, seeing none, or a minor person, secretary, so. If you run the vote, and this has been amended, so, to include the illegal dump sites, so, thank you.
Wesley Hopkins Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Kara Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yep.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel, that passes nineteen four zero against, thank you, council, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman, for all your work, committee's work, from HHS committee, appreciate it. So Chairman Carlo, if you, I think you're up next.
Chairman, I'd like the vice president to follow up on what we're doing here, if it needs to be read. But I do, I do believe that, you know, we need to look out for the health and welfare of our people across the reservation. You know, and I think that we're doing it by, you know, making sure that we do have sites across the reservation for the vaccination. But I just want to ask a question of her before she reads it any further. Are we implementing any plans to reach out to the schools that are opening for youth from sixteen and up?
So yeah, we have gone to local to tech when they had their back to school night. And once they start to open up, we'll, we'll definitely get out there for vaccines.
That's in regard to all schools on the reservation, right?
Oh yeah, once all schools open up, and then one, I was really hoping that they would approve the younger age for the vaccine soon, because once that happens, we'll definitely be hitting up the schools, once they approve that younger age.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that, because I think that, you know, all our schools should have the same opportunity.
For sure, and we are trying to get out there, so this is one way that we are trying to. When, when we asked for the National Guard and we, we were trying to figure that out. We went to the, the White House has a COVID brief every week, and so I let them know that we needed other ways to reach our community. So they came up with a mobile unit, which they are taking around to North Dakota, South Dakota, all the tribes. And it's a mobile unit that they're going to set up, and they decided to set it up at the casino. And so that will be on May seventh and eighth, and they will come back for the second dose on May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. So these are the agreements that they sent out to us for, for use. They just need to be able to set up on the, on the parking lot and have that agreement from us to, to actually do that. So those are the two documents I, I handed out to you all.
I think what's important to mention is that these facilities will be manned by personnel from IHS, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Councils, are there any discussion on this? And vice president, I think in this is also in regards to some of the concerns with the National Guard, is that correct?
Yeah, so that, that is how we pitched it when we told the White House, when they do their, they have a weekly tribal COVID update. And so I let them know that we needed other ways to reach our community, not just the National Guard. So that, so they did come up with this mobile unit idea, and it is going around now. I think it's already hit Sisseton and Rosebud, so they're just waiting to get this agreement, so they can come to our reservation as well.
Chairman Carlo?
I, I do believe in science, even though Ryan continues to tell me the world is flat. So we'll make a motion to approve this, or this agreement, have the president sign it.
Thank you. Motion, is there a second, second by Councilman Yellowboy?
Question.
Okay, so I got, okay, so I got Councilman Poyer, and then Councilman Rodriguez, I believe, so go ahead, Councilman.
Does this require electricity and water?
Yes, it does, that's why we're trying to set up at the casino, because we can get access to that.
So does, is the casino aware of it, that, some ways that true? Because I don't know where there's any hookups out there, that's the only thing.
I assume that they reached out to the casino, but yeah, that's a good question.
To me, it would, out of courtesy, you should contact the, the casino, and surprise, surprise, we're here, and we're hooking up, you know? I think the timeframe would allow for that to happen, so if you'd reach out to them to make sure.
For sure.
I know we're talking about a site where security is there, so that was the reason why the Prairie Ridge Casino site was chosen.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah, my, my question is that, oh well, my concern actually is, we're setting up out at the casino and people have a hard enough time getting to Pine Ridge for the doctor, to the hospital, or for anything. Wouldn't it make more sense to have it set up at the BIA parking lot? There's electricity and water access there as well. I don't, I don't see why you have to add an extra thirty-five miles on for people who can barely make it twenty-six or fifteen into Pine Ridge.
So thank you for the question, Councilman. We have set up in every community at multiple times at this point. And actually Pine Ridge, in the BIA parking lot, they actually have better access to the hospital in Pine Ridge. So we're seeing, and our community events in Pine Ridge, lower rates, because people in Pine Ridge can just go to the hospital. We have not set up at the casino yet, we do know there is people who go there, high-risk populations potentially. So that's why we chose the casino. Also, you need room and water and electricity, like Councilman Poyer noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Jumping Eagle, thank you, Councilman, oh, Councilman Yellowboy, sorry.
Just a question for my right, is there going to be like, are they going to have their own like, medical personnel in case there's allergic reactions, allergic reaction, maybe they have a medical unit there, or something like that?
So there will be medical people on site, because they have to be, and they have to monitor during that fifteen minutes, and they have a process for that, at this point, of monitoring and being able to respond.
Okay, so they're going to have their own like ambulance there, or something, in case somebody has to get sent to the hospital, or?
That's the thing with having an ambulance there, it kind of pulls one of our ambulances away from being able to. We did have one outside at Little Wound, but to my knowledge, I don't think we necessarily have them on site, because there's medical professionals on site, like administering the vaccines and such.
Thank you, Councilman Yellowboy. Additional questions? Seeing or hearing none on Councilman Carlo's motion to approve this agreement between FEMA and our Ogallisou tribe. Secretary, having been seconded, see no further discussion, secretary, if you could run the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hopkins Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Kara Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Gerald Canoyer Junior? Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yep.
Ron DeBray? James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yep.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Skil?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel's motion passes twenty-four zero against, thank you, council, thank you, Chairman Carlo. Thank you, vice president, appreciate all your support and effort with this effort, you know, helping COVID, so thank you. So the next item we have is around, like we finance, I don't know, vice chair, or vice chair, or the chairwoman, if it's up to you guys.
Tyler, do you have the packet there from Lynn?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead, then.
Okay. Resolution of the Ogallisou tribal council of the Ogallisou tribe approving the employment contract of Mr. Elgin Young as the chief of police of the Ogallisou tribe Department of Public Safety. And whereas the Ogallisou tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Organization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under article three of the Ogallisou tribe constitution, the Ogallisou tribal council is the governing body of the Ogallisou tribe. And whereas on April seventh, two thousand twenty-one, by motion and vote, the Ogallisou tribal council selected Elgin Young, chief of police, and alternate of the Ogallisou, and an alternate of the Ogallisou tribe Department of Public Safety, OSTDPS, subject to negotiations of employment contract by the executive committee. And whereas the executive committee has negotiated the attached employment contract with Mr. Young, which provides for a three-year contract term and an annual salary of ninety thousand. And whereas on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the finance committee of the Ogallisou tribe approved the contract and referred the same to the tribal council for its approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisou tribal council does approve the three-year contract of Mr. Elgin Young as chief of police for the Ogallisou tribe Department of Public Safety, which contract is attached heretofore and incorporated by reference as fully set forth herein. Motion.
Motion, seconded by Councilman, old, Councilman Little Thunder, Councilman Watkins, Councilman DeBray, and Councilman Poyer, second?
No.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Councilor. So Councilman Little Thunder, Councilman Watkins, Councilman DeBray, all seconded. So having seconded, Councilman Poyer, pardon.
Question. Stacy, you have a contract, or? Because it says contract attached, my stuff don't have no contract.
Or you have it? Additional questions, council? Mr. Chair? Councilman Jumping Eagle, quick.
Chair, the past chief of police, was he on the three-year contract also? You guys remember?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Gunn? Yes, the.
Yes, the prior chief was on a three-year term from April eleven, two thousand eighteen to April eleven, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you.
And I did want to make a note that I did send a a revised version of the contract which which corrects a very small typographical error in paragraph twenty-six. And the secretary has that.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, additional questions, Council? Okay, thank you. Um, so seeing or hearing none online or in person, um, secretary, if you could run the vote here previous.
I I actually had a question for the attorney.
Go ahead, uh, go ahead, Chairwoman.
Um, Steve, in finance, we asked that their the delivery, the deliverables be amended?
Yes, and then. Go ahead.
And um, that was to include a written quarterly report to council?
Yes, that that's in. I'm sorry.
I see that's included, but um, I I just need to make sure that it doesn't um, um, not allow for the chief to meet with law and order on a regular basis to address issues that may come up.
Paragraph twenty-four on page three says the Chief of Police will report to Law and Order Committee and/or Tribal Council as needed. Paragraph twelve on page two is the is the paragraph that requires the a report within one month of execution of the contract and thereafter on a quarterly basis to law and order and tribal council.
Twelve on page two. Okay. All right, I just needed to make sure that it was in there.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, is there additional questions? Uh, hearing or seeing none online or in person, secretary, if you could, uh, run the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior? Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora White Horse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoia Junior? Austin Hocken Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Clear?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hall Weston?
Ha!
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlos?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Did you get my yes?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, council passes eighteen yes, two no, and uh, one not voting, or one excuse, sorry. Um, thank you, Council. Um, Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Chair. Resolution appointing rule Richards as committee program monitor for the Finance Committee of the Oglala Tribal Council. Whereas the Oglala Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection one, five-one-two-three. And under the article three of the Constitution, Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Tribe. And whereas Article Four, Section One F, One K, One M, and One W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the tribe and its members. And whereas in the exercise of these powers, the Tribal Council enacted the Oglala Tribe Personnel and Procedures Manual, Personnel Manual by Ordinance Number eighteen-twenty-two on August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. And since that time, the Tribal Council has enacted ordinances amending the manual. And whereas the Tribal Council enacted Ordinance Number twenty-one dash thirteen, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, to amend the Personnel Manual to replace the administrative officers in the office of the Chief of Staff with committee program monitors under the standing committees of the Oglala Tribal Council, and to establish procedures for selection, removal, responsibilities, and reporting of the committee program monitors. And whereas Ordinance Number twenty-one dash thirteen added Sections four dash sixteen to the Personnel Manual, and that section provides the relevant part that there shall be six committee program monitors with one committee program monitor assigned to each of the six standing committees of the Tribal Council. And the committee program monitor shall be political appointees of the tribe who shall serve at will. Each committee program monitor shall be recommended by the standing committee in which the committee program monitor is assigned and appointed by a majority vote of the Tribal Council. And the term of office of each committee program monitor shall be for the term of office of the appointing Tribal Council. And whereas on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, by motion and vote, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council recommended that rule Richards be appointed to serve as the committee program monitor for the Finance Committee. And whereas the Tribal Council agrees with the recommendation of the Finance Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Tribal Council hereby appoints rule Richards to serve as the committee program monitor for the Finance Committee of the Oglala Tribe, subject to successful completion of the background check and check and drug test requirements that are applicable to all political appointees under chapters eleven, eleven A, and twelve and Sections thirty-four dash three B of the Personnel Manual as amended by Ordinance Number twenty-one dash oh-six, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. And be it further resolved that Mr. Richards shall be a political appointee of the tribe who shall serve at will and whose terms of office shall be for the term of office of the appointing council, namely, the term of office of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two Killer Musu Administration. And be it further resolved that Mr. Richards shall be subject to the day-to-day oversight of the Tribal Com- Controller and the supervision of oversight of the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council and the ultimate disciplinary authority of the Tribal Council pursuant to section four dash sixteen of the Personnel Manual as amended by Ordinance Number twenty-one dash thirteen, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Motion.
Uh, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Councilman Youngman and Chairman White Horse?
And um, Chair, President, um, Mr. Richards is there if you would like him to introduce himself?
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, I see. Mr. Richards, I saw you. Okay, so you got new contacts, I can't see that good, so. Um, but if you want to come up here, Mr. Richards, and just introduce yourself. So there's a motion, it's been seconded by, it's been seconded, uh, Mr. Richards, uh, feel free to come up here. Oh, Councilman Poyer, pardon.
Tyler, is is he the only one answered to the comptroller?
As far as I know.
The other ones answered to the Chief of Staff, that's what I was wondering.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Gunn.
The committee program monitors are not under the Chief of Staff. They're they're really under the committees themselves and the council has ultimate disciplinary authority, but for day-to-day matters like time sheets, um, they they're under the daily oversight of the comptroller.
Okay, thank you. Uh, of course, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me here. I really appreciate going and working for the tribe. I've been a entrepreneur all my life. I ran in my own trucking company for the last fifteen years. Ran through different trucks under my company. I've done spreading balance sheets, profits and loss. And all the rules, regulations of what it takes to run a business in and out of states, interstate commerce, and all the, all the things that that entails. Been audited by IRS a couple of times, with a good outcome in my favor. Have access to all the federal programming for cannabis sales and services and how to get it from one state to another across states that don't allow it. I have access and resources to all of the things that need to be done here. If I don't know it, I can get it, I can find it. I appreciate your time.
Uh, committee, any questions for Mr. Richards this time? Um, hearing or seeing none. Uh, Chairman, did you want to make any comments?
No, um, I think we could just run the vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, so hearing or seeing none, Mr. Richards, thank you. Uh, yeah, so seeing, no more questions. Uh, secretary, if you could run the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora White Horse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoia Junior?
Yes.
Austin Hocken Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Clear? Sonia Little Hall Weston?
Ha!
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
David Clear?
Uh, council motion passes twenty-four zero against. Thank you, Council. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Richards. We appreciate it. Yeah, thanks. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair or Chair, uh, Chairman, anything else from the board?
No, I don't think so, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. Uh, appreciate your committee, uh, and all you do for our Oglala people. Um, so next, I think we have EBD. Uh, I know that Chairman Stills on, but also Vice Chair Dreamer is here. So however you want to handle that, uh, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Well, you could, uh, Chairman, our, um, Vice Chair Dreamer could take the lead on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Since the resolution, the Executive Committee of Oglala Tribe terminating the employment agreement between the Oglala Tribe and Terrell Pierce, whereas the Oglala Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three. And under Article Three of the Constitution, the Oglala Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the Oglala Tribe, the Oglala Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article Four, Section One F, authorizes the Tribal Council to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. Article Four, Section One W, authorizes the Oglala Tribal Council to adopt laws and protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Tribe and its membership. And whereas Article Four, Section One B, empowers the Tribal Council to regulate the conduct of trade, which includes the proof of consultant engineering construction contracts for the tribe for tribal construction projects. And whereas Article Eight, Section Six of the Oglala Tribe's Constitution authorizes the Executive Committee to act on behalf of the Tribal Council when the Tribal Council is not in session and shall be in charge of all routine matters that arise during such recess and other matters as may be delegated to it by the Tribal Council. And whereas the Tribal, the Oglala Tribal Council is not in session. And whereas the tribe enacted Ordinance Number seventeen-twenty-four, July sixth, two thousand seventeen, to establish the reservation construction project known as the Seven Years for Seven Generations Project. And whereas the Seven Years for Seven Generations Project is a construction project to upgrade eighteen reservation community drinking water systems of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation so they could be transferred to the Oglala River Water Supply System, OSRWS Reservation Water Delivery System in accordance with the Bureau of Reclamation, VOR, construction standards to be covered by annual congressional appreciation appropriations for the OSR WSS Reservation Water Delivery System. And whereas Ordinance seventeen-twenty-four, Section Three B, provides that A, consultants and the project engineer and attorney shall be independent contractors and shall be hired on year-to-year contracts approved by the E and BDC and OST Executive Committee. And whereas at a duly called meeting on April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, the OST Economic and Business Development Committee passed a motion recommending the termination of the employment agreement between the Oglala Tribe and Terrell Pierce, recommending that the OST Executive Committee terminate the agreement. And whereas the committee, whereas the Executive Committee agrees with the foregoing recommendation of the Economic and Business Development Committee and has determined that it is in the best interest of the Oglala Tribe to terminate the employment agreement between the Oglala Tribe and Terrell Pierce. Now, therefore be resolved that the Oglala Tribe Executive Committee hereby terminates the employment agreement between the Oglala Tribe and Terrell Pierce effective April slash twenty twenty-one. And be it further resolved that the Tribal President or the Vice President are hereby authorized to sign documents necessary to execute the terms and attend this resolution.
Motion, uh, motion made, is there a second? Second by Councilman Carlo. Uh, any questions on this?
Mr. Chair, this is Steve. I think that Thomasina Realbert is on, and I I do believe that she she drafted a a resolution that is identical in substance, but is a council resolution, not an executive committee resolution. And all the operative clauses would be the same. But she, I think she's on the meeting and she can confirm that.
Uh, Mr. Realbert. Hi, Mr. President and Petu Weshi Tribal Council. I did send over to Madam Secretary a Tribal Council Resolution that is identical to this one in substance. It removes the two recitals, the two whereas regarding the Executive Committee, um, and then change and changes in appropriate ways, um, from Executive Committee to Tribal Council. So I do believe Madam Secretary has that, um, and has it available for Tribal Council.
Thomasina, I have.
Thomasina, I have received them and I printed them out so that I could attach them to the roll call sheet. So I do have the ones that you sent me in Tribal Council form.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Realbert. Appreciate all your work. With gratitude, thank you, Mr. Gunn. Appreciate your work as well. Is there additional questions on this, Councilman? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, if you could do the vote, thank you.
Actually, President?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead, Chairman.
Um, I think there was a couple of issues. Is Bob there or is he available?
This is pertaining to Mr. Pierce, Councilman.
Okay, so the appointment next.
The next one is, yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Secretary, if you can run the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior?
Good.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Kara Whitehorse? Kara Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
No.
Gerald Canoea Junior?
No.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? James Cross? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Dillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puer?
No.
Sonia Little-Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Seventeen yes, three no and one excuse. Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Vice Chairman Dreamer?
Thank you, Chairman. Another one here. Resolution of the Executive Committee of the Alusu Tribe improving the employment agreement between the Alusu Tribe and Robert Peely beginning April twenty twenty-one and ending in April twenty twenty-two. Whereas the Alusu Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referent in vote on December fourteen, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five, USC subsection five-one-two-three. And under Article three of the Constitution, the Alusu Tribal Council is the governing body of Alusu Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the Alusu Tribe, the Alusu Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article four, section one F, authorizes the Tribal Council to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. And Article four, section one W, authorizes the Alusu Tribal Council to adopt laws protecting, promoting the health and general welfare of the Alusu Tribe and its membership. And whereas Article four, section one B, empowers the Tribal Council to regulate the conduct of trade, which includes the approval of consultant engineering and construction contracts with the tribe for tribal construction projects. And whereas Article eight, section six of the Alusu Tribe's constitution authorizes the Executive Committee to act on behalf of the Tribal Council when the Tribal Council is not in session and shall be in charge of all routine matters that arise during such recess and other matters as may be delegated to by the Tribal Council. And whereas the Alusu Tribal Council is not in session and whereas the tribe enacted... Article four, section one B, empowers the Tribal Council to whereas the tribe enacted ordinance number seventeen twenty-four, July sixth, two thousand seventeen, to establish the reservation construction project known as the Seven Years for Seven Generations Project. And whereas the Seven Years for Seven Generations Project is a construction project to upgrade eighteen reservation community drinking water systems on the Pioneer Indian Reservation, so they could be transferred to the Alusu Rural Water Supply Systems Reservation Water Delivery System in accordance with Bureau of Reclamation, VOR, construction standards may be covered by annual congressional appropriations with OMR of the OSRWSS Reservation Water Delivery System. And whereas the Seven Years for Seven Generations Project is in need of a project manager to carry out the necessary requirements for the construction project. And whereas the Alusu Tribe believes that Robert Peely has the requisite education and experience to assist the tribe in completing the construction of the eighteen community drinking water system upgrades in accordance with disagreements with the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development. And whereas ordinance number seventeen twenty-four, section three B, provides that A, all consultants and the project engineer and attorney shall be independent contractors and shall be hired on year-to-year contracts approved by the E and EDC and OST Executive Committee. And whereas the OST Economic and Business Development Committee has determined that the project manager...
Hello? I think we lost them.
Yeah, we can't hear, I can't hear them.
They disappeared.
Agreement for seven years for seven generation project manager within the OST President's office. Now therefore be resolved that the Alusu Tribe Executive Committee hereby approves the employment agreement between the Alusu Tribe and Robert Peely in the amount of eighty thousand dollars per annum for a one-year period beginning on April twenty twenty twenty-one and ending on April twenty twenty twenty-two. A copy of which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Further resolved...
Gone again.
Changed in the supervision. I'd like it changed to a regular, provide regular updates. I'd like to have that changed to weekly because we have a thirty-two million dollar contract here that, you know, we need to make sure that everything is done in a timely fashion. So I ask that that be changed to weekly with my second.
Okay, thank you. So is the motion amended to weekly? Vice Chair Dreamer, are you okay with that? Weekly updates?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, or so I know that Ms. Realbert, she has her hand up. So go ahead, Ms. Realbert.
Thank you, President Keller. I just want to make the same remarks on this resolution as the other one. I sent in a version that changed in pertinent ways from Executive Committee to Tribal Council, and the Secretary's office has that available.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we made that note and we got the right resolution read, I believe. So thank you, Ms. Realbert. Councilman Puer?
You know, I don't think that's the way he spelled his name either.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's P-I-L-L-E. Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll change that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other questions on this? Councilwoman Whitehorse, I know that you had a question on this, I believe.
Um, is Bob available?
Um, hey.
I'm here.
Oh, Bob's on, Councilwoman.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to go into Executive.
Okay.
Second up.
Okay, so there's a motion being seconded to go into Executive. Is there any discussion on that at this time? Uh, Secretary, if you could run the vote on that. So thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior? Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Kara Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoea Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Dillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
No.
David Puer?
Yes.
Sonia Little-Hawk Weston? Sonia Little-Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, Council, much from pass the sixteen yes, two no and two not voting. Thank you, Council. So we'll go into Executive. So if we want to take maybe like a five-minute break and then we'll come back to get everyone out of the room that doesn't need to be here.